With that, I'm going to start with item number one, which is Appeal 4095-4096, Camille Rigio, 228-230 Lake Walton Road, Hopeful Junction, Lot A, requesting a nine-foot front yard, five-foot side yard, and a variance for being in the front yard for an existing garage. Lot B, requesting a sixteen-foot side yard variance for a pre-existing dwelling, a six-foot side yard and front yard variance for an existing shed, two-foot sideline and front yard variance for an existing six-foot fence, and a thirty-five-foot side yard and front yard variance for an existing garage pursuant to Section 197-07 of the zoning ordinance and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations. Do I have a motion to reconvene the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Good evening, Brian.
Hello.
So, last month, or two months ago, we had the first opportunity to review this. There's actually existing three lots right now. All the homes on these lots were built in the 50s, so it was before zoning was in place. And so we have situations where we have a shed and two garages in front of the dwellings, which is not what code allows right now. But what the applicants are looking to do is to realign the lot lines here and go from three non-conforming lots to two less non-conforming. So both of the lots are still not going to be conforming, but they will both be less conforming. But the bottom line is, we have to give variances to the garages because we're not going to ask them to move structures that have been there for seventy years at this point. So, there's no new dwellings going up. This is all just, you know, we're just kind of cleaning up the issue and making the lots less non-conforming. So any comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
No, I'm good. After reviewing it, I have nothing.
Okay, one last thing. At our last meeting, we consented to the planning board being lead agency. At the last meeting of the planning board, the planning board accepted or designated themselves lead agency and did the seeker part of things, so they did a neg deck. This board is going to rely on that neg deck that was done by the planning board as the lead agency. The public hearing being conducted tonight is the opportunity for neighbors to comment on this application. And it's a continuation of the public hearing that we did last month, so I just want to make sure that's on the record so that, you know, we're all clear on that. So is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Camille Rigio, 228-230 Lake Walton Road, Hopeful Junction, with a bunch of variances to make three non-conforming lots into two less non-conforming lots? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Jackie?
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There's a resolution?
This is Appeal number 4095 and 4096. Applicant is Camille Rigio. Excuse me, the request is for Lot A to have a nine-foot front yard variance from the requirements of Schedule of Bulk Regulations, a five-foot side yard variance from the requirements of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations, and a variance from the requirement of Section 194-107 of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for an existing detached garage located in the front yard. Lot B is requesting a sixteen-foot side yard variance from the requirement of Schedule of Bulk Regulations for a pre-existing dwelling, a six-foot side yard variance and front yard variance from the requirements of Schedule of Bulk Regulations, and Section 194-107 of the Town Code for an existing shed, a two-foot sideline variance and a front yard variance from the requirements of Section 194-98 of the Town Code and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for an existing six-foot fence and a thirty-five-feet side yard variance and a front yard variance and a front yard variance from the requirements of Section 194-107 of the Town Code and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for an existing garage. All of the variances for Lot A and B are referred to as the variances. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Hassan, whereas the applicant simultaneously applied to the zoning board of appeals for the variances and planning board for a lot line realignment, and whereas the applicant received approval from the planning board for part of its lot line realignment to create two residential lots from the existing, from three existing lots, and whereas each of the realigned lots would contain a primary dwelling and an accessory structure, and whereas this is an unlisted action under SECRA, and whereas the planning board declares itself lead agency under SECRA and issued a negative declaration at its April 16, 2024 meeting, whereas a legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on March 20, 2024, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on March 26, 2024, and April 23, 2024, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variances will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the community, as the property will remain residential in nature, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to the existing layout of the three lots. The variances could be deemed substantial, but the proposal decreases the existing nonconformities. The variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental condition. Now therefore be resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request of Camille Rigio as follows. Lot A, a nine-foot front yard variance from the requirement of Schedule of Bulk Regulations, a five-feet side yard variance from the requirement of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations, and a variance from the requirement of Section 194-107 and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for an existing detached garage located in the front yard. For Lot B, a sixteen-feet side yard variance from the requirement of Schedule of Bulk Regulations for a pre-existing dwelling, a six-foot sideline yard variance and front yard variance from the requirement of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations in Section 194-107 of the Town Code for an existing shed, a two-feet sideline variance and a front yard variance from the requirement of Section 194-98 of the Town Code and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for an existing six-foot fence and a thirty-five-feet side yard variance and a front yard variance from the requirement of Section 194-107 of the Town Code and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for an existing garage. Be further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Jackie.
Goes as follows, Aziz?
Aye.
Bravo.
Aye.
Alberto.
Aye.
Art.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Motion carries. You guys are all set. Have a good night. All right, so that's it for public hearings. There's no additional public, have a good night. There's no additional public comment, so now we're going to work through the new applications with our reviews. So item number two, Appeal 4098, Lisa Gussen, Russen, Gussen, sorry. 723 Horton Town Road, Hopeful Junction, requesting a twenty-foot sideline variance for a proposed twenty-two-by-eighteen-foot or three-hundred-and-ninety-six-square-foot detached garage pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations. Good evening.
Good evening.
You are?
I'm Alex Salamo. I'm an architect representing the clients.
All right, so if you could take us through the application.
Sure. So it's basically, it's a very long lot. I'm sure you guys have the paperwork in front of you. And the house is right in the middle of the lot, respecting the side setbacks, but they wish to put a garage on the property, and the best place is really at the end of the existing driveway, which is on the side of the house and within the thirty-foot side or setback. So that's where I have the garage placed on the left side of that drawing there. Beyond that point, the grade kind of dips a little deeper, and it kind of interrupts their backyard there. So, and the adjacent property right next to it is basically just the driveway. It's a very wooded area. You can't even see a house from the south.
Okay, so we have to start with, why isn't it closer to the house? Why not put the garage closer to the house? So we can meet the variance.
It really can't, they'd have to extend their driveway or do a lot of regrading. I don't know if you guys have photos. I have some photos. That helps. So without extensive regrading or putting the garage literally in the back of the, in their rear yard where they have a little patio.
Jackie, do we have Matt's report? Do we have Matt's report?
I have some photos.
That would be helpful, yeah. If I remember correctly, there's a tree, a tree with roots that would be disturbed if it was moved.
You can leave it. We can sort of...
Well, I don't know what everything is there. But, yeah, one of the trees on the side.
They're all different pictures, so keep them together.
This is a tree.
Yeah, I'd have to look at, yeah, the tree. I don't have an exact locate, I don't have it on my plan here, but...
Well, it's in the picture that you've given us.
Yeah, I mean, it can't, yeah, I mean, I would never place a garage right where the tree was, but that's one reason, definitely.
Like trees. You don't want to disturb trees, and obviously you don't want to disturb the roots, so...
Yeah.
And from that picture, we can see the slope that it goes down.
Yeah, there's a picture of the back slope, it, you know, it's hard to see in a photo.
All right, has the applicant spoken with the neighbors? So I, it's appreciated that there's screening and vegetation in between, but have they talked with their neighbor to make sure there's no objection from their neighbor, or?
I don't know. I could find out.
It would be helpful if she did that between now and the next meeting. Are there any other structures? There's nothing else showing up on the survey? So there's no other structures on the property?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay.
There's a patio in the back.
What's the color of it or the finish of it?
It's going to match the house. Yeah, I have, you know, it's pretty simple. It's not too extravagant. I don't know if you guys have the, it has a little side cupboard area.
So it's a two-bay garage?
It's only one-car garage.
One-car?
Single-car garage.
Yeah, there...
Oh, there's a, is there a garage on the house?
No, that's the rear of the house, so it's like a patio.
Okay, so there's like a sliding glass door or something there that...
Yeah, that's, yeah, so if we put, I mean, in my head, like, it could go way in the rear yard, but it would, you know, kind of interrupt their recreational... That's the, looking at the neighbor's driveway, so it would be to the right of that photo.
Where are the septic fields?
That's a good question. I don't have them marked on here. I'd have to ask or locate them myself.
I was wondering if it's in the front yard or the backyard?
That's a good question. I mean, I think it's in the backyard because the slope kind of goes back, so that's another reason why it probably couldn't go in the rear yard. I mean, from the street, it definitely slopes down, so I kind of doubt it would be in the front of the house.
Want to answer questions from board members?
I'm good.
I have nothing.
I'm good.
It'll be an improvement.
Sir?
Alex, do you know if the owner has come in to get a application for the siding?
Yeah, so, yeah, we spoke to, I don't, was that Matt or Mark?
We spoke to me, Matt.
Matt, great to meet you, Matt. Yeah, so the contractor came in, and I believe he did what he had to do and paid for the permit for the siding.
Okay.
So I believe that's done. I don't have, I didn't handle it myself, but he came here last Friday, so we cleared everything for this meeting.
Sounds good.
Okay, good. So there's no existing garage on the house?
No.
So do I have a motion to allow a public hearing for next month?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right, so we will see you next month?
Great.
All right, Jackie will...
She'll be right back. She has a letter she's here.
Okay.
To give you information about the signs.
And it's somewhere else next month, right?
But she'll be here in a minute.
Yes, it'll be at Fire District Headquarters, which is out on 52.
Okay, on 52.
So...
All right, thank you.
Yeah. All right, item number three, Appeal 4099, Michael Scher, 499 Shenandoah Road, Hopeful Junction, requesting a nine-foot front yard variance for a proposed twenty-foot by twenty-foot or four-hundred-square-foot deck pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Evening.
We've seen this property before.
Twice, I think, yes. But not by me.
Not by you, exactly, but... Is this one for the pool?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, all right. So, say the name?
Just last year.
Okay. So you guys have bought the house since then? Okay, and so you're looking to put a deck on. And so you need stairs to the deck, and you're looking to, I guess the question is, why can't you cut the stairs into the deck?
What, set it back behind the house?
Yeah, so there's...
So I do know if I cut it back, so underneath the one addition...
Not that you have to help cut the whole deck, but which can...
Yeah, well, to get enough steps to go down, I'd have to go back probably about ten feet into it.
Oh.
The problem is, because where the deck is level with the door, it's probably about, I want to say, nine foot high from the driveway. Because underneath that one addition, there's a basement, and my sewer line comes out underneath, so I can't necessarily kick it back because of my supports.
All right, I didn't realize it was that high up.
Yeah.
I did not get the sense that it was that high up. Okay, that helps to explain it, because if we can eliminate...
Yes, eliminate the variance, yeah. If I could just push it back behind the house.
Okay, so you actually have to make the deck as large as it is to get over that sewer line, the septic line?
Yes, yes. To get away from that septic line, I had to get at least right to the edge of the house.
So the steps actually will come into your driveway?
Yes.
Okay. Comments or questions from board members?
I didn't understand steps, because where's the driveway? Drive is in the front. Here's the proposed deck, back.
Yeah, I thought I understood the sideways, the driveway was here. Because there's a fence, a stone wall, and everything else, so the driveway is to the left of your house.
Yeah, so the driveway is straight up to the left of the house there. What happened?
This is the deck here. See the twenty by twenty? And so that's why the steps are going to be right here.
Oh, okay, that's, okay.
So the steps come into the driveway. Yeah, this is a stone wall, so that's why, and then there's a fence right behind it for the pool.
That's on the opposite side of the house.
The other side of the house, right.
Yeah, there's a fence up there, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, motion to advertise?
Jackie.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, this is a long frontage. Do you remember how many signs we had in Santos Doles?
Two, I think, two last week.
Because it's like at an intersection there, so it's like goes on a bend.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, so you're going to need two signs on this one, just because of the amount of frontage that you have, so that...
Up near the end of the fence, probably.
Okay.
Toward the church.
Yeah, up towards the church, and then one at the bottom.
And one by the corner.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Right in front of the corner, the dangerous corner of your house.
Yeah, okay.
Because that would be seen by the intersection.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll see you next month at Fire District Headquarters.
All right, thank you.
We're going to keep saying it just to remind ourselves.
Good night.
All right, item number four, Appeal 4101, Gabriella Rose, LTD or Florries, Jamie Florries, 1997 Route 52, Hopeful Junction, requesting a seventy-six-foot front yard variance, three-foot side yard variance for a proposed vacuum station, sixty-seven-foot front yard, six-foot side yard variance for an air station, ten-foot side yard variance for a cooler, ten-foot side yard variance for an ice chest, a ten-foot side yard variance for a proposed cage, and a twelve-foot, twelve percent maximum lot coverage variance pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the zoning ordinance. Brian, you've got a lot going on on this property here.
Sure do.
What happened with site plan approval here?
Yeah.
It's the reason you go to the planning board, is to get site plan approval.
Yes.
What is the cooler for?
They're running out of storage space for their cold items in the store, and they would like to see if there's the opportunity to gain some additional cooler space.
By going over the coverage here? All right, let's take a look at the, we gave it a plan, obviously. Because if I remember correctly, there's some other issue about this one, like...
Well...
Is everything actually on their property, or is it going over to another lot?
No, everything is on their property.
Wait, hold on.
That's a, that's a good... Right on, right on the property line.
We're on the line.
Yeah, on the line.
Right on the line.
But it's a business district, so, again, I don't want to step on planning board issues, but are you before the planning board now?
No. Not from the planning.
Does your site plan include all of these items?
Site plan did not include these items.
I think similar to last application, you have to run the tracks parallel, and planning board likely serves as lead agency for that one as well.
Right, so we wanted to get a feel for the board to see what their thoughts were.
Sorry, I need glasses for this one.
Did you give some information to Jackie on the size of the cooler, et cetera?
Yeah, it's, it's...
Specs or something?
Yeah, it's going to be one of these coolers where they actually form it to conform to the space where it's panelized.
It's right in there.
They would put the condenser on top, so it's going to fit in that shaded area that we show. We can expand on the dimensions, but that was the general location that the applicant had requested, sent to you.
Is all this stuff there now?
The cooler's not there now, and...
The cooler's not there now?
So if you, if you go to...
But is the, is the, what's the big thing? Is that the propane cage? No.
There is a propane tank back there, a propane exchange, but that's also the refuse.
Right. And then the two structures in the front where they wanted to put the vacuum station, there's two footings that were placed there, but there's no structure on top of those footings.
All right, so where is their air station now?
It's on the refuse enclosure. So what's happening is people are, they're filling their cars in the road, and they're stretching a line across the lot into Lake Drive, so the air station's actually on the side of the refuse enclosure, and the line's probably, what, fifteen, twenty feet long, and they're actually parking their car on the shoulder of the town road, and they're stretching the line over to fill anything that they have to fill.
Yeah, but it's...
Sometimes the hose gets put back, sometimes it doesn't. So...
That's right.
With respect to the air station, they're going to try to see if they can move it up front.
So the propane cages are small, you have a fence, that's what's keeping everything on your property. I see the ice chest, so it's really that enclosure is your garbage, is your refuse. And so you want to put the cooler on the outside of this? What does it look like?
It would be, it would probably match the same color as the, as the refuse enclosure, but it would be custom-built, you know, with insulated panels. compressor would be on top.
They're going to be within the garbage like the one in Maypack?
Yeah.
Within the garbage?
Yeah, so what they do is, you don't know the garbage from the cooler, it's all fenced in, is how they have it in Maypack.
And how, where did the deliveries come for the truck? The trucks come to that and drop it off in the back?
At the back, there's a, there's a rear service door. That's where they get their deliveries, so they could go left or right as far as delivering product.
Yeah, so there'll be a fence just like that that's around the garbage, correct?
Right.
So they're not going to be able to tell from the outside what's the cooler and what's the garbage section.
Is that going to affect site distance for anybody coming out of this side?
The refuse enclosure is, it's set back pretty good there.
Not a whole lot. You're on the property line again.
Yeah, if you, if you pull out with a car, you can, you'll have site distance. It's a, it's a lot. It's a big ask.
So...
There's parking. The biggest issues over there right now are parking too, because the plaza right next to this is redoing their septic or connecting to the town septic, so people are parking all over Lake Drive on the opposite side and on this side right now, because there's construction going on at 1989 Route 52. Very congested.
I see. Look. I've never left behind.
So you're asking for a cooler, an ice chest. The ice chest is there. Propane cage, it's there. The air station, you're looking to have it moved up front. Why do you need a variance for an air station?
They're going to consider the footing to be a structure.
Okay.
And it's a state requirement that you have to have.
You have to have it, right.
You have to have it.
And we don't think having it up front is going to be more problematic for car, blocking cars and stuff?
Well, the thing is, right now, people are, they're not even coming through the site. They're pulling up along Lake Drive, parallel to the dumpster, and they're stretching the line across, so they're actually filling their, whatever they're filling actually in the road.
They're not even pulling into the station.
Yeah, so sometimes the hose gets reeled up, sometimes it doesn't.
No, I heard when you said, people can just leave it there, but...
So essentially, what we're adding is the cooler. The other stuff's pre-existing.
Yeah.
And the cooler within the confines and where the garbage is.
The vac, there's two, there's two concrete square footings in the front next to the sign, so one would be an air station and one would be a vacuum. So it's actually three things we'd be adding, air station, the vacuum, and...
Aren't there vacuums there now? Oh, no, I'm thinking of the one on 80.
They add those to the front. Yeah, so the vacuum's just being relocated from the back to the front, so the only two new things.
The air station's being located in the vacuum.
Air station, right, so the vacuum and the cooler are the only two new things.
Those are staying where they are.
Yeah.
Well, the cooler's being added, the vacuum's in the back, and the air is being in the front.
How big is this cooler?
Did we put, I don't know if we put dimensions on there. It's, it's not very big.
Looks like, it looks like it's approximately half the size of the, maybe a little less than half the size of the garbage refuse enclosure.
I think you might have said spec. Jackie, did you get specs from Brian?
It's on here. Oh, I have it.
It's just the variance that they're calling...
That's got to be five by, that's got to be five by eight, maybe?
Is it a walk-in or what is it? Is it a walk-in?
Yeah, you'd walk in.
This is commercial here.
All right, so right now, their site plan allows, has the garbage dumpster at this size where it is, so the planning board knows that it goes to the property line.
Yes, that dumpster is, I asked for a site control. So we would be expanding that fence outward.
What would prevent people from taking the hose from the proposed location and doing vacuuming or air on Lake Drive itself?
There is that possibility. But the thought process was it would be a little bit more contained. It's in the front of the property, so more eyes could be on it, whereas the hose right now is in the back.
Yeah, correct. So currently they're doing it, but what would it prevent customers from repeating or doing the same thing once this is approved?
Technically, they shouldn't. I believe we have no parking signs on the edge of Lake Drive.
Yeah, there are signs.
Yeah, so, I mean, there's prohibition against doing that. More of an enforcement issue.
But you're proposing to eliminate really parking spaces for patrons inside the store would be now set aside for the air and vacuum.
Well, it'd be a, it'd be a shared space, so, I mean, if anybody's filling or vacuuming, it'd be, you know, a temporary measure. It's similar with any other gas station. Usually, usually the air station's in a parking stall.
Right, as a courtesy, though, people don't generally park in there unless they need the air to leave it available for somebody, but in this case, you don't have a whole lot of parking.
Correct.
So the likelihood is that somebody is going to have to wait to use the air if it's here.
Could be possible.
Or fill it up by going onto Lake Drive.
Right, or going on Lake Drive, exactly. If you want to look at Matt's pictures. Why do they, I'm not understanding why they need the cooler. Why, why not leave things as they are? Why do they, I, I'm not understanding why they need the cooler, why, why not leave things as they are?
They've always been short on cooler space in there because they do share with Dunkin' Donuts. So the, the cooler space on the gas side and on the donut side has always been fairly tight.
I don't know, I'm, I'm not thrilled, I'm not thrilled with the loss of the parking. There's not a lot of parking on this site.
You mean in terms of moving the air station?
The air and the vacuum, adding the vacuum.
I mean, how many people get air at the air station?
Oh, God.
I haven't done it in a while.
The one, the Stewart's on 376, there always seems to be somebody getting air down there, so.
And you're always waiting because people do park in that spot too.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's limited amount of parking in front.
Stewart's has more parking.
Right, Stewart's has a lot more parking, right.
And yet, they always seem busy.
Right.
This place is quite busy depending on the time of day you go there. Try to go there around lunchtime, it's pretty, pretty crazy. With Amazon, yeah.
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 I mean, the only thing we could offer up is maybe in that space to have a time limit on the, on the sign that says, you know, less than five minute parking for use for the air station. That's the only thing we could probably do to can at least attempt to control who parks there and for how long.
And maybe I missed it, the point of moving the air to the front is?
It was mainly the hose being stretched across and it being in the back and the front. The thought process was it'd be more visual, and then therefore people would return the hose and.
Currently, there is several parking spots for the air currently, so there is still a.
Yeah, but there, if you look at the pictures, it says they're labeled for employees only.
But you can change it.
So they're less likely to be.
And there's only two of them.
Like patrons.
Yeah, but again, if you change it, you know, employees only to change to, I mean. I mean, employees have to park someplace, so.
Alright, let's talk about the floor area, the, your coverage here.
There's a lot of coverage.
Are you already exceeding it?
I believe we are.
So even without adding the cooler, you're already exceeding it?
I forget, did we put that on there? Yeah.
Twelve, well, hold on, twelve percent is the overage or twelve percent is?
I believe we're, so the original, I think the way we, we got to that is that this was a redevelopment of an existing gas station.
Right.
Where the impervious was almost close to a hundred percent, so we did dial it back slightly. But we are still over code allowed coverage, so we redid the station. We were less impervious than the previous, the previous station, so we were still over on our site plan.
The problem is, oh, not the problem, good for them, is the needs are growing with Amazon or with the other things that open up across the street. So their needs for more space are growing on a small amount of property.
Right, and nobody, nobody wants new gas stations anymore.
That's where we are.
Alright. Any other comments or questions?
A lot are being built on a postage stamp site.
There's a lot going on.
Do you need to see this?
I'm good.
Get that back to Jackie. Alright.
Okay, motion to advertise.
Jackie.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oh, but wait, are we gonna, planning board's gotta.
The planning board, they're, since, since it's an amended site plan and there's, I think, more going on than the regio property, I think that they're gonna have probably a few meetings on this, I would imagine. So I think it makes the most sense for the planning board to be the lead agency on this. I don't imagine.
So should we even be scheduling a public hearing at this point, or do we have to wait for the planning board to do that?
You could hold the public hearing, but then you're just gonna adjourn, I'm sure you're gonna end up adjourning the public hearing.
What I'm getting is, planning board hasn't even circulated for lead agency, so we're getting ahead of them, you know?
I, I don't think the planning board's gotten an application yet, alright, Brian?
We just wanna get the pulse of the board here first, so.
The pulse of the board is not thrilled, but recognize that it's a business and in a growing area of the town and, you know. So the question is, should we amend our motion for the public hearing, dis-schedule the public hearing for June rather than for May because?
I think that makes more sense given.
I don't want us getting ahead of the planning board.
Yeah, we have, we have an application ready for the planning board.
Yeah, I, I think that makes more sense too, because then it would just, it just frankly subjects Brian and declines to additional public hearings when nothing will actually get done, and this board as well, and it's just sort of a waste of time.
Because in May, we would be agreeing to allowing the planning board to be the lead agency. And so for us to have a public hearing that same.
I think it makes, I don't think it makes.
Okay.
So are you gonna amend his motion?
I amend the motion that we're gonna have a public hearing in June.
So okay, a public hearing for June.
That's a lot cleaner.
Who, who seconded that?
I seconded.
Okay, you seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Aye.
So we'll see you in June. Now, you have two roads, so you're gonna need two sets of signs. Is, is planning board gonna do a public hearing on this one too?
Yeah, the planning board will do a public hearing on this one, yes.
Load it up with signs.
Got it. Thanks, Brian. Alright. Item number five, Appeal 4102, Richard Convoy, 23 Largemont Drive, Hobble Junction, requesting a 10-foot side yard variance for an existing 10-foot by 14 or 140 square foot detached garage pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance and the schedule of both regulations. Hi.
Hi.
So, tell us why you're here. The garage has been there for a long time.
It has.
I, I walk by it all the time, so. So tell us why you're here.
Basically, because I was getting a permit for the shed and you guys declared it's not a shed, it's a garage.
Because of the door, okay.
Because of the door. So basically, I'm just trying to get a variance to keep it right where it is and.
Do you know when that shed went up?
Excuse me?
When did that shed go up?
Oh, 2006.
So it's been there for 18 years.
Yeah, but I mean, there was a shed there before that. When I moved in, there was a shed there.
Right, that, that's what I'm getting at, you replaced an existing shed.
Right.
That shed's been there for a long time. Did you recently change, replace the roof on it?
I did.
That's what I thought, like last summer, you replaced the roof.
And the siding.
Yes, okay, Eric, I know which one I'm talking about. Okay.
Motion to advertise.
Yeah, it makes sense, it's up at the top of a driveway, it's right there, it's just, it's just the type of door that he has on it that makes town, the town call it a garage, so. Second?
Second.
For the motion to advertise, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You'll need one sign. Talk to Jackie, we'll give you your information, and we'll see you next month at Fire District Headquarters. Alright, item number six. You're welcome.
Take care.
Appeal 4103, Gerard James, 22 Sunset Boulevard, Hobble Junction, requesting a 750 square foot variance for a proposed 30-foot by 50-foot or 1,500 square foot detached garage pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance and the schedule of both regulations. Good evening.
Good evening.
Alright, Sunset Boulevard, explain why the size.
The size is, I'm a contractor, and I pretty much have two of everything a contractor owns.
Okay.
I have two table saws, two chop saws, I have gang boxes, and I have no place to put my stuff. I have two vehicles, I have a small Kubota, I have a 16-foot trailer, I've got a block splitter, I've got wood chipper.
Let me understand, is this your personal private use here, or is this stored for your business?
No, I retired, semi-retired.
Okay.
And I just don't wanna get rid of all the stuff yet.
Okay. Jackie, what's the footprint of the house? Cause he's asking for variance for the 750, but does he?
Footprint of the house is 1,044.
So what's the variance that he's asking for?
He's allowed 626 or 750, the greater of the two, so he needs a 750-foot variance.
I have Central Hudson power lines behind me, so nobody's gonna see it from behind me. It's gonna be set back behind the two houses that I have on the property now. So if you're gonna see it from the road, all you're gonna see is a 30-foot front.
Okay.
I talked to like three neighbors already, and they don't seem to have a problem.
Okay, that, that's definitely helpful. Sorry, let me go back to Matt, what's the footprint of the house?
Footprint of the house is 1044.
Jackie, this should be in the planning for this, so 60%?
Is 626.
So this, he's, it's, we're going to the 750 anyway, so, okay.
The greater of, so.
So 3550, generally when we see 50 is because you're storing an RV or something like that in there, that's not what you're doing.
I have two vehicles, my girlfriend has a vehicle, my stepdaughter lives in the accessory unit, they have three vehicles. So I have cars all over the place, I have a trailer all over the place.
Okay, wow.
I, I have a lot of things.
So you wanna throw them all in the shed?
Oh, I've been there 26 years now. And I accumulated a lot of stuff. I mean, it's, the shed has fallen apart.
What's the finish of this garage? It's gonna be a finished garage, right, not like a metal?
It's gonna be a metal building on a slab, but it, it's gonna be like a light gray with a dark gray four-foot bottom around it, dark gray roof.
What color is your house?
Gray, light gray.
Okay, so it's gonna match your house?
Yes, the pool deck I just stained yesterday, light gray. I'm going all gray.
Okay.
So is this the proposed garage? Is this the one or?
The one in the middle behind the two houses is the proposed site.
Okay, because I've got two maps.
Yours goes different ways, yeah.
No, that's, he has a new one now.
Oh, there's one that came in today?
Came in this morning, yes.
Yeah, so that's kind of different from what I was looking at. So you have an existing garage, an existing shed?
No existing garage. The garage was there when I bought the house 26 years ago.
Okay.
18 years ago, I made it into an accessory unit.
So that garage is an accessory unit?
Yes.
But again, the survey that is dated April 22nd.
Labels it as well.
Label is, label is.
He didn't change it. I don't understand why he didn't change it, but there's people living in there. I have COs and everything for that with the town.
The survey says in bar, 1994.
Hey, so if we follow the survey that Aziz is talking about, your driveway goes to that second unit. Your driveway does not go to this garage. How are you gonna get to this garage?
Uh, I had two surveys. One survey shows a new driveway going to the garage.
No, we only got one survey. We got one survey from 1994.
We have two. This one shows a proposed garage.
And it shows a driveway going to it.
Yep.
We have two, okay.
There we go.
Okay, so you have to combine, okay.
Yeah. Because the, what he took was his own old survey that he drew on.
I had an architect do that.
Yeah, somebody drew on, but it doesn't show everything that's on his property. So now the pool and other things on his property are showing up on the new survey.
And if I get to, if I get the garage, I will take the shed down out in the back.
Literally, the survey was Monday.
He came Friday. He came Friday and he gave, he gave it to me Monday.
So he didn't show the overhang on the right-hand side of the bar and garage?
He made it all one, all one size.
Oh, he did, okay.
Yeah, he made it all one size. Still labeling it a garage though. Alright, what's the distance from this patio though, to the side yard?
Which patio is that?
There's a concrete patio labeled in, I don't know, I guess it's your front yard.
That's about where the fabric structure is.
Oh, that's the one, that's over by the fence.
Fabric structure that doesn't, isn't staying?
It's not staying provided he gets the garage.
If I get the garage, there's a fabric structure on the concrete pad, the patio.
Yeah.
And that's where my Kubota is right now, my small tractor.
Okay.
That was there when I bought the house, it was a basketball court.
Alright, I'm just wondering how close it is to the property line, cause a patio.
That I don't have a number, and he didn't put it down.
Even a patio has a setback requirement. 15 feet, right?
Um, 15, I think. Yeah, Jackie, I think it's 15.
So I just wanna be sure we're meeting that requirement. Because if, from the, if I'm looking at the survey, I see 35.3.
To the house.
To the house.
Yeah, I don't, I think that's.
I don't think that's 15.
I think that's like six or seven feet.
Is it?
Are you gonna take up, are you gonna, is it, it's concrete or is it, it's like not unilock or something like that?
No, it's concrete.
Is it gonna stay?
Uh, I didn't think about pulling it out.
Okay, well.
Like I said, it was, when I bought the house, it was there, it was a basketball court. I cut down the basketball pole because I don't play basketball.
Here. No, that's a shed.
You have to look at the, and you knew.
This is Sunset Boulevard here, so this is in his front yard.
If the surveyor puts the distances on it, we can clean it up and give him a variance to keep it.
Yeah, we have to, but it's a patio in a front yard.
Well, it's, like I said, it was a basketball court, I don't use it as a patio. As a matter of fact, I don't live over there, that's.
Alright, well, a basketball court in a front yard, same problem, right?
No, I think you can have a basketball court in front yard, right?
If, if he's here anyway and he's applying for variances, you might as well include an advertisement.
But you're gonna have to ask the surveyor to give you that distance.
Okay.
Along with the new, along with the, and the access to the proposed garage, because right now it's not very clear where it's coming from. And I just like to see one survey, not a, two surveys 30 years apart, and I'm having difficulty trying to figure it out.
Well, the first survey is when, when I bought the house.
I understand that, but again, you have a new survey, I want to see everything that you're looking for in one survey. That was the latest area, because it's just too difficult for me to figure out between the two.
Okay, so we need the dimensions of the deck, of the patio, sorry, and then the distance to the side yard.
Okay.
Okay?
And again, do you plan to remove it, or do you wanna leave it there?
I'll have to get a jackhammer to get that out of there.
Right.
I don't know how thick, I don't know how thick it is.
Well, the reason is because somebody down the road could, you know, think of a structure and use it for, you know, other than basketball court. Cause it's already a concrete patio there. You don't need to remove it, just cover it up with grass or just some dirt to hide it.
Whatever you want me to do, I can do that. I can throw dirt on it and cover it up.
Yeah, I mean, because I'm.
I said, right now I have the fabric cut on it, and if I get the garage, the fabric cut's going and so is, I get tires and stuff in there, they'll all go in the garage.
Cause when you have a.
The other shed is going also.
The other shed will go. The other shed has fallen apart and I don't wanna rebuild it.
Yeah, that shed he doesn't wanna rebuild, so.
Okay.
It's the variance for the garage, detached garage, the shed won't be gone and as well as the fabric structure.
Yeah, I mean, you got it a fabric structure, but right now it's a concrete patio and.
You know, the amount of dirt that you're gonna have to put on there to make it, make it grow.
No, just a couple, three inches, that's it.
It's gonna wash off in the rain.
Yeah.
I've done it.
So, so I guess between now and then, the applicant decided what exactly he wants to do with it. But he might as well at least advertise it as a patio, and then he could consider everything that he heard.
I don't wanna jackhammer it out, so if I need to get a variance for that, then I'll get a variance for that too.
I mean, if somebody wants to use it as a basketball, if that's what it was.
That's what it was when I bought the house, yeah.
You know? Again, he didn't do it. That's the important thing, is he did not put that here, so let's clean up what's on the property. That would be the idea, but I, we just need the dimensions of it to advertise it properly. I agree with you, he's gonna go back to his surveyor anyway to get the dimensions for that, so we can clean that up, so if he could add the driveway in.
And then again, part of the resolution would be that it's just a patio, it's a basketball court, or whatever you wanna call it.
Yes, concrete patio.
Concrete slab.
It's a patio, you have it meet the dimensions and the requirements of a patio, because people can put chairs on it, a fire pit and whatever.
Yeah.
Okay. And then what is being, gonna be removed?
Little, for the people living in the garage, like have a little seating area.
Right.
Okay.
Although they've got a deck in the front, but still. Alright, um.
So we need more information, so motion to advertise with additional information. How soon can you get the information?
I mean, I can measure it for you tomorrow and get it to you.
We need it on a survey.
We need it on your survey.
When I talked to Mr. Oswald, who did the survey for me, he said he's six weeks out. He, he might already have it.
He already took the measurements, because he put it on here, he just has to label it.
And he's gotta show the driveway.
And show the driveway.
And he's gotta show driveway.
Okay, it'll all tomorrow.
Okay, motion to advertise?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Jackie, we gotta correct how this one's labeled, because we should label 60% of the house is, okay.
Okay.
You're good.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Talk to Jackie about your sign. And then, last but not least, Appeal 4104, Keith McManus, 58th, 58th Inhale Drive, Hobble Junction, requesting a 26-foot rear yard variance for an existing two-tiered depth, 55 feet by 15, or 825-foot square foot deck pursuant to the schedule of both regulations of the zoning ordinance. Alright, let me, let's get your stuff out now, hold on. Did you give us something new too? Yeah.
Me, I'm sorry.
We have, we have something new for, for your application too. Alright, so if you could explain to us the deck, is there, is there a deck there now?
Yes, there was an existing deck when I bought the house. Rough shape, we built a new deck. Unfortunately, that original deck did not have a permit. I thought it did, because it was on the title insurance when I bought the house.
Okay.
But I found out recently through the town, there is no permit for the deck.
Okay.
So.